Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Work Session. Today's Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. Dan Connolly is meeting to order at 5:37 PM. I'm going to move right into the committee business because we have a large agenda tonight. I'll start with Budget and Finance Committee and I'll turn it over to Mr. Allen.
So do we want to do a roll call or anything?
No, not for the, not for the work session.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Up for discussion, we have three resolutions. The first of which is Resolution 90 of 2020. Sharon, would you mind reading that into record?
Resolution 90 of 2020 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg approving the provisions of a term sheet to modify and amend the second amended and restated settlement agreement between the City of Harrisburg and Ambac Assurance Corporation.
Thank you. And on behalf of the administration, who wants to lead the discussion on this?
Well, my name is Dan Connolly. I'm the financial advisor to the city. I don't know if the mayor is on the Zoom call or not. I don't want to jump in out of line if I am.
Is on, Mayor, did you want to?
I'm here and I, I can let Dan take it away. We're all set.
Sounds good. All right, Dan, the floor is yours. Thank you for being here.
Sure. Well, good evening. It's good to see you all again. I know we've met a couple of times, but just to reintroduce myself, my name is Dan Connolly. I work with Marathon Capital Strategies and I've been working with the city on a few different budget and financial related matters, but primarily in regards to negotiations that have been ongoing between the city and Ambac related to its outstanding general obligation debt, the Series 1997 debt and the related forbearance liability on, that's related to those GO bonds. If you recall, back in 2012, the city defaulted on the Series 1997 debt and the bond insurer, Ambac, agreed to make principal and interest payments on the bonds. The city as part of their agreement with Ambac started accruing what we've been describing as a forbearance liability and it's quite large now. That forbearance liability is getting close to $25 million and accrues interest at 6.75%, which is very, very high. So we had extended negotiations with them last year and if you recall, almost exactly a year ago, right now, we came to you with a proposed term sheet that involved the city making a cash outlay to Ambac to repay the debt at a nice benefit to the city. They were, they were going to give a heavy discount on the forbearance liability. We were all teed up and ready to go in March. It was on your desk and then the world changed. COVID came and with COVID came a lot of uncertainty and everything got put on hold for a few months. One of the clear changes with COVID was the near-term budget pressures that the city was going to be facing, budget uncertainty really. Even more directly related, the minor league baseball season was canceled, which is pertinent to another major piece of the city's debt structure. In 2005, the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority issued stadium bonds for, to renovate the minor league baseball stadium and this city is not the direct borrower on those bonds, but provides a guarantee. And this past year, the city had to make the entire debt service payment, which is about $600,000 or so, because there were no stadium revenues to cover. So when, so we decided to re-approach Ambac over the summer, saying, you know, we want to maintain the heart of this deal and address the forbearance liability, but since Ambac also ensures those stadium bonds, they would have an interest in making that a component of the deal as well. So what we ended up with is a deal where the city would agree to defuse the stadium bonds, which are not callable. You wouldn't be able to go into the market and refinance them. So the city would pay all of the remaining principal and interest on that debt, which is over $6 million, $6 million. It's about 6.5 million as of today. And Ambac would apply about a $1.9 million credit towards that forbearance liability that's accruing interest at 6.75%. So what would, that would mean is the city, which had to make the full debt service payment this year and who knows about next year and who knows about the year after that, would not have to make debt service payments on that debt anymore, once the bonds are defused. And they would get a credit towards forbearance liability for that as well. In addition, the city would still have the right to prepay the forbearance liability, the one that's very, very high interest, up to $4 million and receive 138% credit on a prepayment up to, up to that $4 million, if it's on the execution date. And then for a year after the defeasance, the city could get 130% on that. So this was, you know, the benefits of this new deal were that we're taking the stadium bond risk off the table. The stadium bonds are, is the city's most inflexible liability. It's, it's not callable, so you're stuck with it. And unless there's really special circumstances, you are never going to benefit for refinancing it. And we're also able to get some benefit related to the forbearance liability. I would add that the recent news of the city having its taxing powers extended is a game changer from a financing, refi, financing perspective. The city will likely be able to refinance that 6.75% debt at a much lower rate. So we get a second bite of the apple of that as well. So this deal gives us the opportunity to address the stadium bonds and get a benefit and also the refinancing of the forbearance liability. So at the end of all this, the city can really clean up its debt structure and save residents literally millions of dollars. So, you know, I was, in preparing for this, I was referring to the slides that the mayor presented at the budget presentations last week. You know, I'm not sharing my screen or anything. I'm kind of relying on you guys being familiar with those slides, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and address any concerns you might have about the term sheet.
Yeah, thanks. So the, the few questions I have, and I've tried to pay attention as much as I could last week in the presentation, just to try to make sense of it all. But I'm going to ask a few questions just based on your professional expertise, kind of acting in good faith on behalf of the city in regards to this, that it does seem like overall, from my perspective, it is a favorable deal for the city to enter into in terms of just the best way to kind of reduce the debt load and in fact, the overall interest we pay over time to be able to resolve some of this debt, you know, sooner than later. Is that a fair assessment from your perspective as well?
Yes. The refinancing is key to making this deal comparable to the one last year from a present value savings point of view. So I think this puts us in a better position after refinancing than before. The previous deal, because it's paying down higher interest rate debt, it did have some, a higher PV benefit just on its face, just, you know, like the one-shot thing. But overall, this will look the better, this will save the city more money and provide some, a higher short-term benefit as well, which is really what you need right now too, given all kinds of revenue uncertainty.
Well, and I think that's the other thing that I was thinking about too. So obviously we know we're still in the midst of a pandemic. We know the world changed last March. We'd like to believe in some respect that we are, you know, moving to a, hopefully someday soon, getting out of the current pandemic situation that we're in, but there is some things that we can't predict. And, and so one of the things that I'm concerned about going into this, and I mean, this is kind of a precursor, next week we'll be entering our budget hearings to talk about passing the budget. There's two factors that we're looking at from a budgetary standpoint this year. One is a significant drawdown on our general fund balance, of which part of this Ambac deal, part of that would go towards this, which I've always said debt settlement is a good way to draw down the funds, especially it saves kind of in the long run. But can you help council perhaps understand what are some of the risks that are out there that we should take under advisement and consideration in looking at this, knowing that we are still entering into a relatively volatile year when it comes to revenue forecasts and understanding in terms of where we're going to be? I'm just, I'm worried that we over commit and can under deliver should something happen or the pandemic continues longer or we enter into another emergency declaration and we have to, you know, that has a huge impact on revenues coming in in the next fiscal year. I just want to make sure that we understand all the risks associated with, should we move forward with approving this deal? Have we looked at the big picture and looked at all those risks and made sure that we're making a wise, you know, fiduciary decision?
Sure. And where the flexibility is in terms of drawing down on balance comes with prepaying the forbearance liability for sure. I mean, there's $2 million associated with that in, in the budget. If we get into about May of next year, April next year, and revenues are tighter than we thought, or the budget is generally tighter than we thought, there's no obligation to make that initial payment towards the forbearance liability. You, you would still have, you'd still be able to play, pay down that entire $4 million over any time over the following year and preserve liquidity that way, if that was your managerial choice. So there is some sort of, there is flexibility in that respect, because understandably, you want to preserve fund balance. The, the best way to avoid a fiscal calamity is liquidity and it's something that every municipality is monitoring on a month-to-month basis. I would say a refinancing potentially would help in that respect too. If we were, don't want to get too far ahead, if we're able to execute a refinancing concurrently with this, you wouldn't even have to come off out of fund balance for that $2 million next year. You could roll it all into a refinancing and stretch out the debt service payments, preserve fund balance at the same time and reduce your debt load, accomplish those goals, which is, are clear for you. So there is some flexibility baked in there. I mean, it, you know, at the end of the day, it would be a pretty big cash outlay for the defeasance aspect of it, about $5 million or so. But there is some wiggle room for the other piece. I, I will say that we, we weren't looking at a point in time when we were evaluating this deal. This was part of the city's multi-year financial manage, uh, financial planning process. We, we know based on the anticipated maturity or non-anticipated, the debt is going to mature in, in two years from now, the expenses will drop off and the city will be able to rebuild fund balance in a couple of years. So we are taking a multi-year perspective here. We are confident that we, the city will be in position to maintain well above its fund balance policy and still reduce its debt load.
Right. And I, and I, I get that too. And I think the, this is like one component of consideration that we have to look at as we go into all of our considerations running the budget for next year, is the degree of which council is comfortable with the drawdown of the general fund balance at this point in time and juncture, knowing some of the uncertainties that we're entering into because the pandemic still continues. So I think just as I've been thinking about it over the, like past week, since the mayor's presentation, the budget and going to next week, these are all considerations in mind. I will always say, I'm always in favor of what we can do to draw down the debt sooner, quicker, later, because the sooner we do it, the more we are opening up our, you know, our budget abilities, you know, in, in future years, to spend things on future capital projects and, and just, you know, expenditures that an expenses the city has. So it's just a matter of like, you, this is a step of that consideration that we have to look at. And then furthermore, look at the other proposed budgetary items and, and make some determinations in terms of, number one, both priorities and then also kind of, you know, what we think is the most fiscally responsible thing that we can do. I'm going to stop there. I'm not, I, I'm sure that some of my colleagues have questions, so I'm going to kind of go down the line and I'll extend a question to them as well to be able to ask. And I'm going to start looking in order of our day asks from my right usually and go to Councilmember Daniels.
Um, so do you mind repeating again, what's, what's the benefit in current value for us under this contract?
With the, without a refinancing and the schedule that was presented in the budget presentation last week, if the city defuses the debt, makes a $2 million payment towards the forbearance liability this year, when the, the feces is executed and another $2 million next year, the total present value benefit is 4.2 million dollars. The, the gross dollar benefit is well above that, but present value, it's the idea that, you know, a dollar 10 years from now isn't worth as much as a dollar today. So, so from a present value perspective, it's, it's 4.3 million dollars, assuming a 6% discount rate.
And I think you said it already, but just quickly, if you don't mind repeating it, I'm sorry. The difference between the, like the key differences between what we discussed earlier in the year and this one?
Sure. The, the key difference is the, the deal last year was solely focused on the forbearance liability. So the cash outlet was going to totally pay that down and reduce that obligation. All of the, the benefit however, would be on the back end of the debt service payments on that forbearance liability. The city will start repaying the forbearance liability beginning in 2023 and they'll repay it through 2032 under the current terms. Under last year's deal, all of the prepayment would reduce debt service on the backend. So the, the present, the, the savings were high, but you wouldn't have any lower debt service payments until about 2027 or so. So, you know, there, we believed in that deal. I mean, it was going to save the city a lot of money. You know, post-COVID, it, it, it's kind of hard to say, yeah, yeah, we're in the exact same world, did the exact same deal, it's the same, it is, is the right fit. We think this is a, a really good deal.
And do you think, should we do this, given your experience, what are the chances of being able to revisit this contract once we're out of COVID and we have a better sense of what things look like?
Revisit the contract with Ambac?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think at, well, you know, hopefully we can refinance this liability and that, that'll be in the, the end of that amendment. It won't be an obligation to Ambac. And, and I, yeah, I'm, I always be a little cautious. I don't want to over promise, say it's a done deal, but extending the taxing powers was a significant development for the city. And I think there's a good chance that, you know, you'll be able to refinance at material savings to 6.75%.
That's it for me. Thank you.
You are going with the Councilmember Majors.
Thank you. I think a, a lot of the questions that I have were already asked, but, you know, looking at the repayment schedule that's in here, I mean, there are still a couple of significant payments that would be due in the immediate years. And I guess having some certainty from the taxing authority is going to give, you know, some of the, yeah, some of those financing agencies a little bit more comfort, knowing that we at least have that revenue stream. But yeah, just looking at those, you know, through 2022, yeah, we have a couple of, you know, large payments that would, that would be due, but I guess the easing over those next 12 years, well, 10 years after 2022, make it a little bit more digestible from my perspective, but you know, I guess my concern isn't necessarily on this, but you know, what, what the, the world looks like post-COVID in terms of what revenues coming in, even with the LST are, are going to be very uncertain because we just don't know how many, you know, folks are still going to be physically working in offices. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this and my biggest question was going to be the differences between last year's question, last year's deal and this deal, but that was answered. So just more of a comment than a question. So look forward to hearing anyone else's questions or thoughts on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Going over to Council President.
Thank you. Yes. Under your attorney fees, under fees and expenses, I see that we are owing you $400,000. My question to you is, are we going to continue to pay the interest rate at 6.75% until this is, until the contract is settled?
And those aren't my fees. I think those are fees related to attorney fees way back in 2012, 2013, they were rolled in there. So that, that is, that is part of the liability payment that the city has to make, that, that's accruing interest on. So that, it, when, once it's paid down, that piece of it is paid down and ultimately, if, if you're able to get out of the whole thing, that'll go away and, you know, be rolled into refinancing or it's just paid down.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Going down the line, Councilmember Mattson.
No questions for me, because most of mine were already asked. Volatility of the moment makes me a little nervous, but there's not much we can really do about that. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All the questions that I have have been asked throughout the time, so I don't have any questions at this time.
And Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions, Mr. Connolly. Thank you for providing an overview of where we were and where we are currently in this state. So I appreciated that. Thank you.
So maybe the one final question I had, and it's something that Councilmember Majors has had kind of sparked it with me, or maybe Councilmember Mattson, when we're looking at kind of the volatility of where things stand currently, is there, is there an occurrence that could happen that would put us in default of this agreement that we would be protected under? Should there be things that we cannot foresee?
Well, the, the biggest thing that you can do is monitor your financial position on, not even on year-to-year basis, a month-to-month basis, as you know, certainly through COVID. And I know your finance department already does that. The, the biggest risk to any kind of default is a, a major drop in revenues and budget tightening. Like, like I've mentioned, we have put this deal in the context of a five-year projection, which is based on a number of different assumptions. Our assumptions show that the city doesn't return to 2019 revenue levels until 2024. So we, we think they're reasonable revenue assumptions, but they have to be looked at, you know, on a regular basis. I mean, I'm thinking about parking revenues in particular. You know, that's, that's a major risk. And if, you know, if it turns out the assumptions in the plan are not conservative enough, then there has to be some sort of push and pull, just like every five-year plan, whether it's some way to increase revenues or, or reduce expenses. As, as far as, you know, special terms that could trigger a default, there is no major risk to the city in that respect. I will say one improvement of this deal over the last year's deal is that, if you recall, if for some reason the city didn't make a payment on the stadium bonds, that forbearance liability would rise from 6.75% to 7.75% immediately, which was another motivation for us to address the stadium bonds, you know, you're not going to default on that.
You've worked with a number of kind of cities, even if you've been just about as correct, in terms of just offering this type of guidance in general. So some of the things I've been reading and, and looking at, and so this is kind of just kind of getting your perspective on this, but I know a lot of cities across country are trying to deal with, what are we doing in, in light of, you know, being in a COVID-19 environment and how do we budget accordingly and things like that? I, I have some concerns going into next budgetary year in terms of how we've been able to forecast what revenues could be. You know, it, it's just hard to be able to predict and have a good sense of those things. Can you share anything that you've seen some other cities do that, that might be helpful for us to consider when it comes to proper forecasting and, and looking at some of the, the ways to kind of better account for? Like I said, my big fear going into this year is, is it's not so much this agreement on its own, it's all the other things that we kind of have on the list and the drawdown of the, the fund balance and looking at all the things that we have to kind of look at. I'm very concerned about that because there's this unknown thing. Had we had this conversation a year ago, I never would have thought that deeply about it. But here we are now, you know, nine months into a pandemic and with, you know, still some concern about how long it's going to continue and the impact to us in terms of being able to make sure that we can still offer our core city services. And we've always been in a situation relatively lean because most of our budget goes to pay out, you know, operational costs that we can't really effectuate. So we have this small window of opportunity to work with funds to do things like capital projects and things like that. And so at any rate, all that to say, like, is there, is there anything that you've seen from the other clients you work with that we should kind of consider, or maybe you're doing, it should be doing or should be thinking about as we look at particularly next year from a budgetary standpoint?
Sure. Well, I mean, what municipalities are kind of all over the map in terms of what they're doing. Some are, are not doing very in-depth analysis, others with pretty robust finance departments can do a little bit more. The best thing you can do is scenario plan based on what, you know, different local economic activity could be in, in your view of the general national economy and in the pace of, of recovery. What I, I have done with several municipalities from the onset was to pay particular focus to earned income tax revenue, which is a major revenue source for the city, obviously, both in terms of what EIT activity is, is based on in employment trends, wage trends, and also what the collection patterns are for that revenue source. Because the city is in a, is lucky that it's in a position where it's got a strong fund balance and you're not, you know, trying to get through the end of the year on a shoestring budget. Other municipalities are and on a month-to-month basis, it's, you know, when, when your EIT revenues are coming in based on, you know, activity that happened three months ago, that is a more relevant factor. But I, I think generally, you, you look at what your key revenue sources are and you identify the local and macroeconomic trends and, and what your, your forecast is going to be for that, to those factors. When we looked at the budget this year, because I was very involved with Mark and the finance team, you know, you know, we took a hard look at EIT. It's forecast or projected less than this past year, even though, you know, hopefully there, there's a vaccine and the, the, it won't be as tough a year. Hotel taxes, we took a look at, you know, we reached out to Dauphin County and, you know, to just get a feel for, you know, what, what is your perspective on future revenues and conventions and, and, you know, your top 10 hotel taxpayers seeing a, you know, a more depressed outlook? So, you know, based on the revenue sources and what your general fund is weighted hardest towards, focusing on that and what the local trends are. And, and the scenario plan to, to, to work in a prolonged. a prolonged and legal economy.
All right. Well, thank you for your insight. I appreciate it. Thanks for being with us tonight on this. And in terms of this resolution, for now, we will put this onto the agenda at our legislative session. The special one, is it December 10th? Am I right with that date, Sharon?
Yes, December 10th is the last legislative session of the year.
All right, thank you. And thanks, Dan, for being here tonight. We're going to move on to Resolution of 94 of 2020. Sharon, would you read that into record?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Resolution 94 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services contract with Mavic Strategies for strategic guidance and intelligence gathering for lobbying related services.
There we go. I see the person there. And Mayor, do you want to do an intro or do you want me to turn it over to Ray?
For this one, I will, and then I'll hand it over to Maverick, and they're quite capable of speaking for themselves. But I think we just heard from Dan Connolly what a game changer the extension of our taxing authority is going to mean for our residents. It's going to mean through a refinancing, literally millions of dollars of savings. And that's on top of the extra revenue that's going to be now coming in for for years to come. I just wanted to extend my great thanks to Maverick for for their hard work on this, their relentless work over the course of of the past several years to to sort of lay the found work initially with Act 124 and then and currently with with the latest actions of the legislature. It's it's been remarkable to watch them in action. And I would say that there's a lot more that Maverick can can continue to offer for the city. And one of the the unsung accomplishments of the past year, which I just wanted to remind council of, is that we are now planning in our budget to actively redo State Street as part of our Vision Zero response. We took PennDOT from a position of being adamantly against that road diet to actually not only being in favor of it, but actually paying for it and being our partner. And that was largely due to, I credit Maverick for for their efforts on on our behalf, working with that department. So it's just an example of how all of our strategic goals and initiatives in the budget, and that's what the budget is. It's a it's a statement of strategic goals and initiatives benefit by having this this active lobbying force there, helping the city forge partnerships with across party lines and on the state level. So I think we owe Maverick a great, great deal of thanks, and there's there's more to come. And with that, I will be happy to turn things over to them directly.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to you, Ray.
Hey, thanks, guys. First of all, it's good to be with you all, even if we're not all together like we typically are. It's good to see everyone. Obviously, the mayor mentioned some of the things we've accomplished. You know, excited about the taxing authority. It was certainly something that was a battle up at the Capitol, but it was one that we were successful in. And we think it's been a long term goal for us to get done for you and to see happen for the city. I think as people have talked about tonight, it's it's a great benefit for the taxpayers. We're excited to play a role in that as well. I know all of you have relationships with legislators and once we were able to get it into the fiscal code, it was, you know, thanks all of your help as well that we were able to carry it over the top because the fiscal code only passed by, you know, a handful of votes. So everybody who contributed to that and helped is certainly responsible for the for it. Mayor brought up the Vision Zero project. That was something that, you know, we were determined to get change PennDOT's view on. We're successful in doing that. I credit Kyle, obviously, for working directly with them to actually get them to help pay for some of it. So but we have other things on the horizon, obviously maintaining our appropriation. We did that in this budget and we'll continue to do that. Look, I think, you know, some in the House were not as keen on helping as some in the Senate were, but we were able to bring everyone together. But I think in the years to come, we're going to be able to potentially see an increase in that allotment or at least some sort of thing that continues to update what the city contributes. The one thing that we've been successful in and we want to continue to do is just make this case that Harrisburg is such a unique situation. We hear a lot about here in Harrisburg compared to Scranton or to Pittsburgh or to other places. And all of them are unique in their own way, but we're unique because, as you guys know far too well, you know, the state owns so much property here, 42% of the city. Almost 55% of the buildings, 58% are tax exempt. There are just so many challenges that we have here because of state government. And I feel like over the last several years, we've made a lot of progress in making that case to both the administration and which, again, is a little easier case to make, but then to the Republican legislature as well. And after the election results, it looks like, you know, at least for two more years, we'll have Republicans. But we've been able to take Harrisburg from kind of a political football to something that both caucuses or all four caucuses feel some responsibility to. So I think, looking forward, we obviously, there's some R cap projects that we'd like to advocate for for the city. Continuing, like I said, that relationship with the legislature, maintaining this local authority, not that I think that the legislature will come and change it, but continuing to make sure that it's there. Like I said, hopefully updating the fire contribution and appropriation and the other services appropriations. Continuing to look for other funding sources as we talk to Zero, Vision Zero Project was something that went from opposition to actually us identifying a way to get money to help pay for almost the entire project. So we're always on the lookout for that kind of stuff and obviously continuing to keep the cooperative in the I C in the keep the C in the ICA and finding ways to make it a more cooperative body between the city and that authority, as long as the state says that they are going to be a part of this. Moving forward, we want to continue to find ways to work with them, but also keep the legislature in the know of exactly how cooperative everybody is being with each other. So I think we made that point. And look, we've been honored to help. We really appreciate support. I know that, you know, over the years, it's been something that you guys have not taken lightly. And we appreciate you putting our confidence in us and giving us this opportunity, and we'd love to continue to do it. So I'm happy to answer any questions, Kyle, as well. I know Sean is on the phone, so anybody who can help answer anything, we'd be happy to.
The only question I have right now, I mean, obviously, we look at your contract kind of now on an annual basis. I think when we approved it, we approved it at the end of this year and then wanted to get it tied into our budgetary year in terms of looking at the services that that you would provide for us in that respect. So in kind of looking at that, what in your assertion, what are the most realistic, tangible things that you feel would be accomplished in 2021 that we might be able to kind of point to as either from a goal setting standpoint or just from a like a realistic standpoint? And I realize that might be hard to answer because none of us really thought we'd get the taxing entity. So I know that 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 might be a loaded question that, but I just, just in terms of like, if you're if you're putting things that you're working towards, what is the most tangible, realistic things that you think are 2021 opportunity?
So I think that's important. I think, obviously, you know, you guys don't, you guys don't pay us for past accomplishments, you know, we got the taxing authority done, that's great. And we understand now it's, you know, what are we going to do next? And I think, and Kyle can jump in here if he thinks I'm wrong, but but I think the most on the horizon are things such as R cap projects and identifying more funding sources for the city. I'd like to tell you that we can get you a kicker for the fire appropriate, you know, services appropriation. But I'm not sure we'll be able to do that in this coming budget. We'll we'll float it and try. Just like we weren't sure we'd be able to get the taxing authority in this end budget, but we floated it, pushed it pretty hard and they were, you know, the Senate Republicans ironically were the leading leading the charge on getting this done and got it done. So we'll talk about that, but I think that our cap, the funding sources, and I'll let Kyle.
Yeah, I think our cap, there's a round that already should be announced shortly, and then there'd be another upcoming round that we would guess in 2021. So another bite at the apple as we go forward into 2021. That's some funding sources, and then we could look into other other grant programs that you guys may want to apply for when those grant, when the timeframe opens for those application period.
I think as you're doing capital, obviously, is our cap and then infrastructure improvements. PennDOT, we also hear from our folks in legislature, we think there could potentially be a transportation bill either around this budget or in the fall. That's a realistic possibility, and that's something that I think, again, we would want to have the city interests front and center from our perspective on what other transportation monies we could use, whether it's, you know, roads, bridges, et cetera, anything that goes in that bill, we would want to be able to get, pull up several bites at that apple when they produce a transportation bill. Not sure when exactly that will be. I think it'll have a little bit to do with, you know, how the House leadership is still relatively new, so they're not running around asking to raise like a gas tax or something like that. But there is a lot of talk about some other ways to fund transportation. So I think that'll all be on the table and in discussions, but that would be another, that would be a big one if the bill comes to fruition for this year.
All right, I'm going to open up to questions for my colleagues. This time I'm going to start down at the other end of the typical day, so we'll be on it. I'll start with Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. It's nice to see you again. I just wanted to say thank you for all of your efforts with our taxing authority, and I'm so excited that PennDOT has agreed to restructure State Street. I mean, it's something that I think all of my colleagues, we've been very vocal about with the Vision Zero project, so I'm very excited that something will be coming to fruition for the residents in that area. Their safety is our number one priority. So thank you very much. I don't have any questions. I look forward to continuing your work another year and accomplishing more of our goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Good evening, gentlemen. Just echo my colleagues' sentiments. Thank you for your hard work. We really appreciate it. I look forward to seeing more work in the future and working with you. I just have two questions. Well, actually, really one question. So looking at the cost, it's a $5,000 per month retainer, correct?
Correct.
And after that, there will be billable hours?
Nope, flat fee.
Okay, just flat fee. Okay, that was that was kind of the only question I have.
You got it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving over to Councilmember Madsen.
Just one question for you. First, thank you for all your hard work and accomplishing all those goals and getting the city in a good fiscal situation. Really, really appreciate that. And the work on State Street was excellent as well. So thank you for that. Would it be possible to get more reports from you, potentially maybe quarterly? I don't know that we would need to have it monthly, but just a quarterly update, status update, what's going on and?
That's something that we've talked about now, two renewals, and in this one, it legitimately was the pandemic that did it. And we will, we will make sure we get you a written report at minimum from here on out and then be happy to do what we're doing right now. Come to council. Hopefully sometime soon, we'll actually be able to come to council. You know, but it may not be for the first quarter of next year. It may be into the second quarter. We'll make sure we get you something. Happy to come on here and update you. Whatever, however we can do that, we will make sure we get you, get you what you need. And also, I've, you know, also thought anything that you guys want us or, you know, are on your agenda, you know, don't don't be afraid to let us know. I know, or Councilman Madsen, you've reached out to us before about some things that, you know, have been an interest in your areas, and I appreciate that. We will do anything we can to try to help you guys with something you see in state government.
Okay, thank you. No questions for me. Thanks, Dave. Moving over to council president.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for all the hard work and effort that you put in for the taxing authority of the Capitol. I understand you did an exceptional job, and I just want to say to you, thank you for giving us an update on the initiative that you're going to undertake for the next year from your firm. My question, my one question I have is now, where do we go from here? Because now the mayor talked about refinancing, so are you looking at efforts to refinance the city debt? And if you are, I think we need to take a slow process with this because even with us getting this taxing authority, it puts us in another credit bracket, which we probably moved to a B plus or A plus rating now. Because before this, we were at a low C. So are you looking at doing, looking at refinancing any of the city debt?
So I obviously, that's for your financial advisors are better at better at advising you on that. The only thing I
You know, I didn't ask for your advice. I said, are you looking at effort to look at refinancing? Because now I know, I know what happens after this. I'm just going to be quiet because, you know, I can take you through the process. I was here from the beginning. I know what happened. We were in a deficit. So I know the stages that we had to slowly take baby steps to get out of this debt. So I know now that we have a better credit rating, we're going to knock on our doors. So you're the lobbyist, and I'm certain you're going to be able, you know, what we can do as far as, you know, refinancing some of the city debt. So that's my question to you. Are you looking at that in the next year or so?
We could look at that. We'll help any way we can, obviously. Yeah, we'll do whatever whatever's best. We
Kind of try to be quiet on it, but you know, Ray, I know. But thank you anyway. No, I know. I'm going to be quiet, but you know, I'm going to be looking at that. I just appreciate everything you've done, and I look forward to working with you. I'm glad that Mr. Madsen said something about the quarter reports. I want to see something in writing with this coming year. So thank you and continue doing all the good work that you do for us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving over to Councilmember Majors.
Yes, thank you. Well, hey, Kyle, hey, Ray, good to see you virtually. The, I guess, one question I have first for the mayor in terms of part of their contract is the news monitoring and Hill monitoring and providing information to the client on a agreed upon basis. What what is that a basis that is agreed upon with, how is that communication working between you and Maverick Strategies?
Sure, I can respond to that. They they do an excellent job of keeping me informed. Over the past year, my my primary contact has been Kyle. He calls regularly, sets up meetings on the Hill as as are needed and keeps me informed of opportunities. And so I always feel very well connected.
Okay, so I guess there's no formal arrangement. It's just call as 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 needed on Hill activities. You know, I guess just in terms of the monitoring on the agreed upon basis. So there is the agreed upon basis is what, just as as needed? I'm just asking because having done some some similar work, you know, when you have certain clients, I don't know, daily, weekly, you know.
You, for some clients, we do do like a weekly report where we just essentially tell them kind of generally what went on this week. And then also anything specific in this instance, be local governments, et cetera, anything for us. We're happy to provide that to all the council and to the mayor. If that's something you guys would want, it'd be easy for us to do.
Yeah, no.
Isn't anything we've, it's just we've never discussed doing it before, but we're happy to do it. It's easy.
Yeah, no, look, and I think, yeah, my question's come because as as of right now, I think, you know, look, you guys have done great work, but, you know, sometimes you become a victim of your own success in terms of lobbying contracts for cities because the thing that we needed most was the taxing authority. We got taxing authority, you know, extended for much longer than I I even thought we would do, which is great work, but so I'm just
100%.
Yeah, so I'm just making sure if we're going to have this, yeah, if we're going to have this retainer at at 5,000 a month, that there's, you know, outside of, hey, you know, hey, Kyle, you know,
Need this.
Yeah, reach out, I need this, I need that, you know, something, you know, some of the tangibles here, at least, you know, as we're transitioning into something new. Not that I don't think, you know.
We were very mindful to be value add for you guys, so we want to make sure we're always adding value. Like I said earlier, you know, lobbying is one place where you definitely don't get paid for past results as you know, having having spent some time doing that. So we 100% get it, and we'll make sure that we're continued to adding value and finding new ways. That's an easy way to do it, and and if anyone comes up with any others, we're happy to discuss them and figure out what we can do to to continue to add value.
Yeah, and I think, like I said, I think as the Councilman Madsen mentioned, and we've talked about in past contracts, that we can just get something, especially with, you know, COVID and there being some of this, you know, disjointment in terms of the the regular communication, especially, you know, for you guys in terms of how, you know, the lobbying world, you know, was flipped on its head because, look, you just can't spend time in the Capitol, you know, you know, you know, gathering information in the same way anymore. It's a little different, not that it's impossible. It's just different right now. So I guess that was one of the questions. And then the second one I have, you know, understand profession, the lobbying services and government relations, the political consulting piece, what what is that? How does, what does that look like in terms of any services that have been rendered in the past year? Like, I get the professional lobbying services. Yeah, that's in the contract, so it's
I'd have to take a look at it.
It's in our resolution. It's it's the second whereas, it's in the second whereas clause.
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at it, Mayor. Yeah, I'd have to take a look at it, Mayor. Maybe you guys can send it over. Uh, there shouldn't be anything in there about that, but I don't, I, I don't know how, what. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
Okay.
We don't do anything political for, um, obviously this contract, so.
Right, yeah, so I guess just for.
Kyle and I don't agree on politics, so we can't do anything political together, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I get, yeah, just for me, just, I said that, that just, that language, I don't know if we can just get that removed from our resolution. Just gives me a little pause, um.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, um, and.
Just a little sidebar, because Neil, are you looking at that right now? I see you're looking at papers, so I want to see if he's, uh, making note of that.
Yeah, I don't think there was any more thought in the resolution except, uh, disclosing that that's one of the services that Maverick does in general, not for us. It, it listed who they, what they do and, you know, I think it was just sort of thrown in there as that's part of their advertising of what they do out there, so.
Okay, well, yeah, and I mean, I know that they, you know, try to, that's a separate lane of travel.
Separate company and everything.
Sure, I think it was just explaining who they were. I think it's the same language that was in there in the past too, so.
Okay.
But we, we can knock that out. That's not an issue, so.
Yeah, okay, um, and. Said, I, I may have another question in the future, but as of right now, I think those are the, the two biggest thing I have, but you know, thank you for the work that you're doing. It's just, yeah.
You know how to get us if you need us, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Daniels.
I'm sure I don't really have too many. Thank you for the work you've done. Um, you know, I just need clarification about the struck. About your entity. I feel like every time you come, there's some kind of cloud over you. The first time were homophobic remarks, the second time were racist remarks. And now there's this growth opportunity fund thing that I don't really understand. So can you explain to us like the distinction? Between that entity and the entity you're in? And then if there are issues with the work that's done with that entity, how does that affect? The work that you do for.
Yeah, sure, no worries. Yep, um, so, uh, first of all, the growth and opportunity funds a C four. Um, which does no, it doesn't do any political work. It does, uh, uh, public affairs and advocacy stuff. Um, I don't have any official role in it. Um, I did help create it, um, and. Uh, it has obviously been the source of a couple articles over the summer, um, but it has kind of died down since then. Um, but I, it has nothing, Maverick Strategies has nothing to do with it. Um, it was something that I think the only entity that I'm a part of that had ever received any money from it was Red Maverick Media, which again is our political consulting thing. Um, I certainly understand the first two things that you mentioned of being a cloud. Um, this third one is more of a, I would say more confusion for some folks, and I, I don't mean you per se. I think a lot of people. Yeah, yeah, I, but I think, um, it really has literally nothing to do. It was something that was interesting to reporters, but as they said throughout the thing, there was. Nothing inappropriate about, uh, the fund itself. So I, 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 I would love to explain it more to you, but it's essentially a C four that does. Public advocacy that I helped set up. Um, I don't really do anything else with it. Um, and, uh, I've been to a fundraiser for it before, um, and that's pretty much it.
So are you like a principal on it or are you like someone who could be served, uh, for, with it?
No, not on the board, not anything. Like I said, one of my companies may have received, uh. Payment for like a, you know, setting up a, uh, the C four, et cetera, but I don't do, you know, direct work for it.
Okay, uh, so then, um, so there's no connection between the two?
Certainly not this company that's in front of you now and, and, and that. I mean, obviously, like I said, my other company may have gotten payment from it. Uh, for some services, but it's not anything that I do or anything that I'm involved in.
And that does it for me. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, John, thanks for, uh, hopping on us tonight and. I will move this, uh, resolution for, uh, vote on our special legislative session on December tenth.
All right, thanks, guys. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, moving on to, back to my right screen here. Resolution ninety seven of twenty twenty. Sure, Dan, would you read that into record?
Resolution ninety seven of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract. With, is it Makaya S. Goldberg and Associates Consulting LLC to provide program management consulting services related to the city's FDA. Retail standards grant program.
All right, thank you. Does someone want to start from the administration to get some overview on this?
Well, good evening.
Hi, Nava, how are you?
I'm doing well. I'm doing well. I think I should be on camera.
Not yet, but.
Okay, okay. Well, first of all, I just want to thank everyone for, uh, putting this on the agenda for today and again, thanking you for all the. Uh, support for the Harrisburg Health Office. As you know, as health officer, I know I've sent quite a few. Um, notices out over the past few months in regards to some of the, uh, grant award dollars for, um. The Health Office here in Harrisburg, uh, going to reach the FDA retail standards. And I know I sent a lot of information out as to what the standards are, but basically, um, the goal of the office is to. Uh, increase public safety and, and, you know, obviously combat foodborne illness and other, uh, health related issues. Uh, through the, uh, city of Harrisburg so that we can promote the health and wellness of our, uh, constituents and, and our friends and family here in the city. Uh, one of the things that, um, is part of the process with the FDA, I'm pleased to say that these dollars. Um, are guaranteed, which is interesting, you know, being that we're in the times that we're in where there's a lot of uncertainty. Uh, there hasn't been a lot of discussion and there is a commitment to continue, uh, funding into, uh, twenty twenty one and beyond. So, um, that's a, a very positive thing. So the net effect on our budgets at this point, uh, will be zero. So there's no additional costs, uh, for any of the things that are proposed this evening and moving forward, uh, in relationship to the FDA. Uh, standards grant. Uh, one of the, uh, reasons why we were looking at, um, having, uh, additional support. In regards to program management, uh, there are a number of deliverables, number of, uh, of, um, milestones, if you will. Uh, that our program manager, uh, which is Malkeia, uh, Goldberg and Associates. Uh, they would be able to bring forth some of the compliance issues in regards to, uh, the reporting standards for the FDA. The management of the grant process and, um, just bringing in, uh, management of the, the programs and the personnel that. We hope to bring on, uh, now and moving into twenty twenty one. So I'm very excited about that. Um, again, the dollars are allocated and approved on the federal level. So at this point, we're just moving forward to. Initiate the contract and continue to move forward. And I do have her on, um, this evening. And I'm willing to, um, I'm obviously open to any questions you guys might have. And again, I just want to thank you all for the, the support. And, um, and if any council person is interested in, um, you know, participating and doing anything with the Health Office. Uh, if you want us to, you partner in any way, if you'd like to see some, you know, additional reports and so forth. Um, please feel free to let me know what you need and I'd be happy to provide it.
Great. Now, but one, the, one question I have too, just as the selection process, do we got forbid for this? How do we, uh, come to making the selection for? Michaela Goldberg and Associates?
Well, we actually went through a, I actually reached out to a number of, um, partner agencies and other. Health agencies and health offices around the corner, around the country rather, that have, uh, similar, um, population sizes and similar situations. Um, I'm pretty unique in the aspect that I'm, um, here on my own. So I wanted to get someone who had a, um, breadth of, um, experience. And most importantly, the ability to manage the federal contract process. So as looking through the resumes and, and getting recommendations, our community, the healthcare compliance and the, um, food safety community is, is a small one. So to find someone with the limited dollars that we had, um, to do the project and, um, basically had the background. You know, that's how this, this election was made. So we just looked at and said, who could do it? And, uh, and basically we looked at the dollars and cents as well.
Um, I know you mentioned, uh, is it, is it Malkeia or Malkeia? I want to make sure I'm not butchering your name.
It's Malkeia.
Malkeia, all right, thank you so much for being here. Is there any, uh, do you want to introduce yourself to members of council? Give them a sense of who you are as well?
Uh, absolutely. Good evening, council. My name is, uh, Malkeia Goldberg. Uh, I do go by Kia, um, to make it easier for everyone. It's Kia pronounced just like the car. But it's spelled K I Y H. Um, I, um, am a Franklin County PA resident. However, um, I am based. Um, sometimes out of New York, so I am part time between the two states, but I do live in Waynesboro, Pennsylvania. Um, and I am in Harrisburg one to two days a week or additional as needed, um, for this program. And I do have a history, um, with Harrisburg as well as with the state of Pennsylvania, um, as well as a significant background with federal government contracting. Um, and I'll be happy to provide any background information, um, about me or my organization that you may need. But looking forward to working with this team and the city moving forward. And I was trying to turn my camera on so you could see me as well, but for some reason, oh, there it is. There it is. Hello.
I'm going to turn it over to, uh, questions from my colleagues for either, um, you, Kia or, um, or Nava as well, but let me start with. Uh, this time with Councilmember Daniels. We'll go back to the other side. You're on mute.
I was just saying, I don't think I have any questions. Thank you.
Uh, moving over to Councilmember.
Yep, sorry, um, no, no questions at this time.
Uh, Council President.
Well, thank you. I just want to say thank you, Nava, for reaching out and, uh, receiving this grant. You've done some wonderful things in the Health Office and I look forward to working with you and Makaya, um, together to make sure that we can bring health. Healthy things to the city of Harrisburg, to our residents.
Thank you, President Williams. I look forward to it. I mean, of course, at this time, I'm also open to all kinds of suggestions. I mean, more than ever. I'm getting a lot of calls, getting just a lot of input in regards to, um, education, uh, with COVID nineteen being as it is. Uh, the Health Office, we will be looking into doing more of that. I know primarily my focus has been, um, food safety and, and, and really dealing with the foodborne illness. But I really believe truly that as we grow and as the, um, focus changes for twenty twenty one. Uh, the more dollars will be available for us to look at things such as chronic disease, mental illness, um, just general overall wellness. Chronic, um, you know, things that have helped, that affect disproportionately, um, our community, uh, the food desert. So there's quite a few topics and areas of interest, um, that I would love to be moving into and have, uh, designs to move into. With the partnership with, uh, Goldberg and Associates, so we could expand our direction and our focus in the community.
Is this part, now this, well, this, uh, grant, uh, also involve the businesses in Harrisburg as far as educating them on the food safety and trying to. Deal with the COVID.
Absolutely, and they're becoming more, um, hand in hand, President Williams. Um, the primary goal initially, initially, um, thirteen years ago. When the, um, FDA standards process began was to focus on foodborne illness and food safety. But it has obviously continued to evolve and now as we're looking at the situations within our, our restaurant community. Um, and just the whole process of, um, social distancing, for example, um, it's kind of all, you know, congealing together now. And becoming more of a broader, um, focus. So, uh, that's something that, you know, our office is going to have to adjust to. Um, I'm doing, uh, additional things now and focusing more on overall wellness, uh, and addressing obviously COVID. But also some of the other topics that I mentioned, uh, previously, because we're looking at, you know, foodborne illness, but there's also so many other things that go into that. For example, folks who have chronic conditions are more susceptible to getting foodborne illness. So what is the precursor to do that is to deal with the. The chronic condition so that they wouldn't be so adversely affected if they eat, you know, the wrong thing, for example. So, um, the expansion is there, the opportunity to, um, move forward and, and progress and, and bring administration. Um, the presence in the community that not only are we going to be looking at, you know, foodborne illness restaurants and those kinds of things, but also individuals. And, and different groups that have, um, concerns in the health and wellness area.
Hey, please reach out to me if I can give any, uh, support or assistance to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Madison.
Hello, good evening. Um, no questions for me. Uh, I know that I work, I work closely with the Capital Region United Way. And they have the Contact to Care Initiative, which helps, uh, underinsured and uninsured, uh, folks get, uh, health insurance. So I wasn't, I didn't know if you're familiar with that program. If you're not, I'm happy to do some introductions. Maybe that could be a good, uh, connection.
Oh, fantastic. Appreciate that.
Okay, all right, I'll do any introduction.
All right, great.
You.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Green.
Good afternoon, or good evening, excuse me. I don't have any questions at this moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to take this time to thank Ms. Wright for her research, um, and Ms. Goldberg. Thank you very much. And I look forward to, um. Whatever comes of the, the grant program. I think you have some great suggestions in terms of health and overall wellness. Um, especially during this time. So thank you, ladies, and I look forward to the work you will do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right, I want to thank you both for being here. Thank you, Kia, for joining our call. Nava, thanks for, uh, being here as well and, um, we will go ahead and move this resolution up for. Vote at our special legislative session on December tenth.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I can. Yes, right back to you, Council President.
Well, thank you, Mr. Alec. We will now move on to Building and Housing Committee. Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. Um, Houston, could you please read Resolution ninety three into the record?
Resolution ninety three of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a multi-year agreement. With Property Registration Champions LLC to register vacant, abandoned and foreclosed properties within the city.
Thank you. Um, who from the administration will be speaking on this resolution?
I'm, I'm from, my name is Kevin Sidella. I'm here from ProChamps. I, I can represent the vendor. I can speak to, to the program if, if you'd like, Councilwoman.
Sure, please.
So we began our program in Harrisburg in twenty fifteen. It's been five years. Uh, we are focused on registering foreclosed homes. We're a very unique vendor to the city in that we've never sent you a bill. Um, it's a free service. Uh, what we do send you is fees. It's revenue enhancing and since we began, we've, um, we've sent about two hundred thousand dollars back to the city in fees. Um, so it's completely free. It's revenue enhancing, but most importantly, it provides a communications tool for the city's, uh, code enforcement department to use. Um, when trying to combat neighborhood blight, uh, when the grass gets tall and no one can contact the owner, it's abandoned. Um, that's what we try to do. We spring into action to put you in touch with, um, someone who can be held accountable. What we call them is responsible parties. Um, we've registered two thousand property since we started and our contract is up. We're, we're really proud of the work that we've done in Harrisburg. And, um, and we hope to get the chance to continue working for you, but, uh, but we're also here to, to answer any questions that you might have, you might have.
Thank you very much for your presence tonight. I do have one question, well, two actually. Um, in reference to your service, so is this just something, the information that you generate in contacting? The, um. Property owners, um, is, is any of that public information or is that something shared with the codes department?
It's information, the database that we've created for Harrisburg per the contract is actually the city's database. It's not ours. Um, we have no proprietary, uh, authority over it. Um, it's yours. We built it for you. If ever the city wants to get out of the contract. We'll simply export it and send it to you and you can do with it what you, what you want to. Um, your code enforcement team also has the ability to export it at any time. Um, into Excel. We don't give permission to the general public and we don't recommend that you do that. Um, simply because a lot of the registrations, most of the registrations, for example, we got eighteen last month. All eighteen were, were foreclosures. Um, that were registered six months ago are still sitting in foreclosure. We re- reregistered them and figured out who the responsible party is. Some folks are still living in those homes. They're in financial trouble. We don't necessarily want to advertise what they're going through to the general public. So we don't, we don't really do that.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious to know.
Now, you could get access to it, Councilwoman, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Um, my other question, I just wanted to review the terms of the agreement. So it is for two years?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
And there's a thirty day out in it. If at any point the city wishes to get out or we wish to get out, written notice, um, thirty days. Uh, and we, we, we would, uh, cease our relationship.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will open the floor to questions from my colleagues. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions?
Yes, so the fee that you're retaining is the same amount as under the prior contract, right?
Yes, ma'am. We keep a hundred and the city gets a hundred.
Um, and do you have, do you know how much you've uh, given to the city over the last few years?
Yes, ma'am. Since uh, December of 2015, we've sent 202,700 dollars back to the city.
And have you noticed any patterns of that going up or down?
We have. That's a really good question. So basically, we peaked in 2017 with registrations in the city of Harrisburg. We registered 473 that, that year. Um, this year, we're down uh, almost 38%. And the reason for that is because the federal government has stepped in and kind of put a stop to foreclosures during COVID, um, which, you know, we should all be grateful for. No one should be kicked out of the house uh, when you're um, going through uh, the pandemic. There's lots of people that are, that are struggling with work and and what have you. Um, so we're seeing a 40% drop since our peak in 2017 this calendar year. However, I think it's smart, the city looks to maintain this program because eventually those four band barances are going to come through. And when they do, if there's a lot of abandoned homes, you're going to want them registered.
And if I remember correctly, um, or I don't remember correctly, that's what I'm asking you, um, the there are moments of reregistration, right?
Oh, yes.
Is there a frequency to reregistration, or is it just when there's a changeover in ownership?
What happens is, uh, when we initially started this in Harrisburg, it was an annual registration. Every year, they were required to register. Um, but what we found is, over the course of a year, these properties, they're treated by the foreclosing entities almost like a child would treat a baseball card. Um, they're swapped back and forth. They change hands a lot over the course of a year. So we went in and we altered the language, and and the whole point of the program is to get your code enforcement team the correct data when they need it. And they may only need it once a year. Um, but when they do, they got to know who to talk to. Um, if there's a fire or something like that, an emergency, they, they need to speak to the foreclosing entity at these, at these parcels. Um, so we changed the language from a twelve-month frequency to a six-month frequency. So every six months, we go back and check to see if it's still in foreclosure. Is it still X Y Z property manager? Is it still X Y Z bank? And then we gather, we gather that information, and it, it does change hands a lot. It was a smart move. It gave the code enforcement team um, more useful information and even increased revenue.
And um, I don't know if you would be able to answer this, but the software or the database that you're using, do you know what their interfaces directly with the codes database that we have?
It doesn't. It's a separate program that they have to log into separately. We can provide a feed, almost like a daddy dump. We do that for other cities. Um, we've been asked, to my knowledge, to do that in Harrisburg, but we would.
How, how much does that cost?
No charge. Hundred dollars is all we get.
But I imagine there's probably some like tech requirements for that to happen smoothly.
Say that again. You broke up.
There may be some tech technological requirements for that to happen smoothly.
Yeah, well, on your end, for sure. Um, I don't know exactly what, I think your team, I don't, I don't know exactly what you use. But our information is, is in, it's in Excel, and it's exportable at any time. So you can take it out of our database and load it into yours whenever you want. Um, or you could just use our database, which is what they do now.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Majors, do you have any question?
Uh, sorry, uh, no, no questions at this time. I got a, a, a thirteen-month-old that's running around here, so uh, no questions right now. But thank you for the work, uh, Kevin.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks. President Williams, do you have any question?
I'm sorry. Thank you, uh, Ms. Bowers. I do have one. About how many properties per year are you seeing that foreclosed on?
New foreclosures. This year is a really good estimate for that because all we're getting right now are the um, the reregistrations from last year. Since March, there haven't been any new foreclosures. So on average, uh, if I had to give you, and it, we're, we're averaging this over five years, I'd say we see about 300 a year.
Wow, okay. Well, that's all I have, but thank you for helping the city to identify these properties.
Thanks for letting us do it, ma'am. We appreciate it.
We certainly appreciate that. We want to address the abandoned buildings and vacant buildings and homes that's in, that's in the city, that now exists in the city. So we appreciate all your assistance that, that you've given us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. Vice President Alec, do you have any question?
I don't. Um, I remember when we uh, passed this the first time, it was intriguing then. Um, I'm glad to know it's actually helping us out. Um, so thanks for the update, and I have no questions at this time.
Thank you.
Councilman Mattson, do you have any question?
Uh, no questions for me. Uh, good to see you, Kevin.
Good to see you.
For your work.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Green, do you have any question?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you for all your hard work. Um, this is a great benefit to the city. I think it's a great opportunity, and it doesn't seem like we have to put much work in on our end, so always like that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Kevin, for sharing and being present this evening to answer questions. Seeing as though there are no questions, comments, or concerns, I would like to move Resolution 93 of 2020 to our next legislative agenda on December 10. This concludes the Building and Housing Committee portion.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Moving on to Parks and Recreation. Ms. Daniels. You're muted, Ms. Daniels.
Okay, so for Parks and Recreation today, we're reviewing um, uh, Resolution 92 dash 2020. So it's a resolution ratifying the city of Harrisburg's application for driving P forward level two EV charging rebate for $36,000 uh, to help offset the cost of installing four EV additional dual plug charging stations in City Island. Um, who is here for the city to? Um, so could you just give us a brief summary?
Sure. Um, yeah, this is looking at extending what we had started last year on Third Street. We're looking at trying to do another application to the uh, driving P forward program with DEP, where they would provide uh, $4,500 per plug for electric vehicle charging stations that we're looking to install on the second floor uh, the city, um, City Island parking garage. And that would not only provide um, charging capability for residents with electric vehicles during normal work hours as well as on the weekend, but also it would allow us to start to convert over city fleet vehicles to 100% uh, plug-in electric. So for departments such as codes, um, building and housing, a lot of the vehicles that are downtown, um, which are then put in that location overnight, we'd be able to keep those stations open to the public for public use during the day and on the weekends, and then overnight, charge our city fleet vehicles. Um, that would potentially um, mean a savings in gasoline, oil, and maintenance and things like that. For every eight to twelve vehicles, we convert of approximately $10,000 a year. And in terms of reduction of carbon emissions, because the city's power currently comes from 100% renewable energy of about 36.8 metric tons. So I was, um, yeah, we're looking to try to apply for that and then potentially roll over some of those savings to look at possibly putting a few more in the future, because this is something that basically will continue to pay for itself as we're saving more money with each of the vehicles we're able to convert. And that's a conversation I've been having with the fleet manager, um, the cities. I believe the enterprise rentals uh, that we have, the lease system allows us to get electric vehicles.
And um, so the 4,500 is the rebate per?
Per plug.
Per plug. So what's the total cost per plug?
Well, the total cost of the hardware for this is $45,324, and the installation is 24,600 um, for this specific project. And the um, the total, so the rebate, the, it's eight plugs, four stations, two plugs per station would cover $36,000 of the total project.
So the rebate is 36 out of 45, or I think I missed a second.
Well, what I was saying, the, the total cost for the installation on the hardware is about $69,000. And the um, the rebate program would cover 36,000. Last year, when we applied, the amount per plug was a little bit higher. It was um, $5,000 per plug. So we were able to get a total of $40,000, and they reduced it down to 4,500 this year.
Okay, and then the difference between the cost, what fund, what source of funding is that coming from?
The, the, there was $60,000 originally budgeted in the host fee to try to cover the cost for this um, last year. With the idea that we'd be applying for the rebate program grant.
And so you said you've spoken to the fleet manager. Um, how's, what, one, how long does it take to install these uh, these plugs? And then, oh, how's, how many cars, like, what do you see the period of transitioning our current cars into?
Well, according, uh, the conversations I've had with Nick, um, we're supposed to be getting two plug-in hybrids in December this month. Um, so those are vehicles that are hybrids, but you're able to plug them in to run on a sole electric charge for a certain number of miles. Usually, it's about 25. Um, so we're starting with that, and then next year, we're going to be starting to convert over the vehicles. We're hoping to get a total of between 10 and 12 um, next year, is what we've discussed. And then looking at possibly expanding that further. We do have two charging stations that we were, um, that we took from the uh, removal of the solar ray off of Seventh Street that are currently in storage at Public Works, and there's money in the um, in the budget already next uh, for next year plan to be able to install one of those stations at Public Works and then one for the engineering vehicles. And that would be in addition to what we're trying to put in, in the city on.
And then, do you anticipate us being able to um, add some of these plugs into some of our o- other public spaces? Like, uh, I don't know, like Reservoir Park or some of the other?
Well, that, that would definitely be the hope going forward. The idea is that we've been trying to look at this, um, the program that is being offered by DEP to try to provide some of the upfront capital that is needed to get these things installed. Because once they're installed, then we're saving money every year by not having to pay for gasoline, oil, and the maintenance of the vehicles that we otherwise would have. And then we're able to use that potentially to reinvest and being able to put more stations in and convert over more of the fleet vehicles. Because the, the more of the city's fleet vehicles that we're able to convert over to 100% plug-in electric, especially with the current rates that the city's getting for electricity, the more money that we will save over time.
So, thank you so much. Um, that's it for me. I'm going to, let's see. Um, I'm going to just go by the people I'm seeing on screen. So I'll start with Councilman Mattson. Do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Bowers.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you, Chris, for being here tonight.
Vice President Alec, do you have any questions?
No, you actually asked the one question I had in mind, Shemane, so I, I'm good right now. Thanks, uh, thanks for the update on uh, this. I think it's a really, um, it's kind of cool, actually, at the end of the day, trying to move to something that's more sustainable long-term.
Councilwoman Green?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, President Williams?
Yes, just a couple, Chris. Um, if we're using 36, because we budgeted 60,000 last year. So what will we do with the additional funding? Are you not, because you, you just stated that you're going to put additional funding uh, for this year, for next year, for two additional um, plugs. So what are you doing with the additional funding out of that 60,000 that we budgeted for last year?
Well, the, the 60,000 that was budgeted was budgeted with the assumption uh, built into the host fee that we would get the, the grant. So we were only going to be trying to spend 20,000 out of pocket. Um, and then they, but they reduced the total amount of the grant. So then that um, took a slightly larger amount for the total required. Um, and then the, the funding for the other stations that I referred to was actually budgeted by Nick Fisher, um, the fleet manager in the DNC budget. Not out of the host.
All right, thank you. How many um, city vehicles do we have that are 100% electric right now?
Right now, right now, to my knowledge, none. We have a number of hybrids. And um, we're getting the two plug-in hybrids, which you're, you're able to plug in to get a certain amount of charge to run off just the electric motor before that runs out and then it switches to a hybrid capability. We don't currently have any, the, the 100% electric vehicles.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
And Councilman Majors?
Thanks, Chris. Uh, no questions uh, for this.
And so, thank you, Chris. Um, I would like to uh, place this on the agenda for the next legislative session.
Ms. Daniels? Moving on to Public Safety Committee. Ms. Green?
Thank you, President Williams. Uh, the first resolution we have for the Public Safety Committee is Resolution 91 of 2020. Ms. Houston, would you be able to read that in the record for us?
Resolution 91 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a domestic animal protective services agreement with the Humane Society of Harrisburg Area to provide services to the city of Harrisburg's animal control program.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the administration that will be providing a summary for us?
Uh, Councilwoman, this is Neil. I, the police could not be here for this tonight. Um, this is the identical contract that's been approved previously for the annual basis. Um, so the terms are the same. I will note that the deposit that we're required to make is about $10,000 less this year, and a deposit reflects half of the charges we incurred the, the prior year. So the cost, a number of animals, has dropped significantly. I, I can't speak to why, but uh, that is, that has been sort of the standard approach we've had, I think, for six years now with the, the Humane Society.
All right, thank you, Neil. Um, I don't have too many questions. Um, just one, will we be able to get a summary report of the animals from last year? Just so we have that for our record to read over?
Yes, we will, we, I, we will, I figured that question was coming, and we'll get that from the police before you guys get to your vote next week.
All right, thank you. I'll open it up for, uh, for questions from my councilmembers. I will start with my left, so Councilwoman Bowers.
Yeah, I don't have any question.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Matt?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Council President Williams?
Thank you. Um, Neil, I just have a question. So I'm reading this, and they're saying that they may temporarily shut down uh, due to an outbreak of a disease?
Yes.
Okay.
Which I think is standard for uh, anything that houses animals.
I was, I was just concerned, is there a disease that they are talking about now that exists amongst the animals?
No, it, it's the exact same term that's been there, so it's never happened that I'm aware of.
And how many, um, I see we've already taken 100 pit bulls. So is that inclusive of the domestic dogs included, any other type of breed of dogs?
So the pit bulls, and I don't, I can't tell you why they treat them differently in terms of the, I guess, the amount they have to separate them from, from some of the other animals.
Okay.
But this is really based on a per-animal charge um, for what we bring. And, and they just capped it simply because at one point, there was a lot of pit bulls coming in, not just from us.
So do we, is there a cap on the cats?
I do not believe so. It's, we, we have to ref, we would have to make another deposit if we go over the amount uh, that we deposited. It's, it's an Evergreen kind of fund, where we have to make sure if we hit our number, we have to put another $10,000 uh, into the pot.
All right. Thank you, Neil. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Alec.
I mean, this is, it becomes an annual event, so I'm not sure I have any additional questions at this point. Um, so I'm, I'm fine with uh, moving forward with it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmen Majors?
Yeah, agreed. Um, no, no additional que, no questions for um, for this outside of the one that you asked to get the information from. I guess either the police or animal control.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions.
All right, I would ask that this is then moved to our next legislative agenda. The next resolution would be Resolution 98 of 2020. Ms. Houston, would you read that in the record?
Resolution 98 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to, to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Murray Associates Architects PC for the purpose of providing architectural and interior design services related to alterations to the existing flooring and two firehouses.
All right, thank you. And it looks like we have Chief Interline here. Would you like to give us a summary of this?
Sir, good evening, Council. Uh, this uh, this contract is to hire Murray and Associates to do work uh to get us together bid documents and look for best solutions for the replacement of the engine bay floors at fire stations one and two. It's one of our biggest uh projects we have yet to accomplish in the fire stations, uh getting them back to useful life. You'll recall, we've done the H V A C, we've done roofs, we've done a whole bunch of other things. Uh, and this, this is really a big project, uh one of the biggest ones we have left. Uh, it's being funded by uh two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in gaming funds that the Dolphin County awarded us. Uh, so we're looking to uh get this thing shovel ready for uh early uh twenty twenty one.
Thank you. I don't have many questions, just one for you. Uh, could you just tell us how we came upon this company? Like, what process did we go through?
Yep. So uh, we've, we've worked with Murray a lot over the years. Uh, and you know, Murray, I I've been in a lot of meetings uh over the last seven years now. It's been uh in, you know, they're a local city-based contractor or city-based architectural firm. Uh, and I believe that they are uh well-suited to uh to help us out.
All right. I will open it up to questions from my colleagues. This time I will start to my far right with Councilwoman Daniels.
I don't have any questions for this moment.
Thank you. Councilmen Majors?
Oh, thank you. And uh, thanks, Chief. Uh, just, just again, so all those gaming funds are already secured, correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is uh, that was already secured from last year's funding source.
Okay. And we we still have what, another year or so to expend those funds?
Co- correct. Yeah, we have till the end of uh, actually, I think till twenty twenty two, I believe, is what it is.
Okay. All right. Uh, yeah, no. So no questions. Look forward to uh you guys being able to get this work done so we can uh provide the upgrades to uh to those uh to those bays at the firehouses. Thanks.
Vice President Allen?
Thank you. Uh, you know, I apologize if you answered this already. I should probably stop reading and listening and trying to do two things at the same time and looking at the resolution. But how did we make the decision to select Murray for this particular project?
It it's been, uh, for me, it was to using them as a historical, um, just, just from a historical work that I've been able to do with them. Uh, I feel that they're well-suited. Uh, and they've already, you know, as I, as I met with them, they already had quite a few ideas uh moving forward and and are well-versed in the the materials that we're going to have to use to to make this project really successful so that we're not dumping money into it uh more than one time over the next twenty years.
Okay, very good. I mean, I know they're, I mean, they do great work. So it's not a, it's not a question of not uh not a value in the rate here in the city. And I think there's a a lot of good perspective for utilizing them. So thanks, Chief.
All right. President Williams?
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Madison?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Bowers?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you for being here, Chief, and for utilizing a local firm.
All right. If we don't have any questions, thank you, Chief Airline, for coming today um and giving us some information on this project and how we got through this process. And I would ask this to be put on our next legislative agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to uh Public Works Committee, Mr. Majors?
Thank you, President Williams. Uh, before us in the Public Works Committee, we have two resolutions. We have Resolution ninety five and Resolution ninety six. And I'll uh I guess I'll ask uh Chardin if you can read Resolution ninety five of twenty twenty into the record.
Resolution ninety five of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Borough of Penbrook for the purpose of authorizing the city to provide municipal solid waste and recycling collection and disposable services within the borough.
Thank you, Chardin. Um, and I guess I will turn it over to, uh, I'll start with the mayor. I know we've had conversations about both of these resolutions. We've been moving forward uh through the budget process and getting everything ready. You know, and we also work on the timing of them since uh they required uh, you know, resolutions from the uh the municipalities that uh are considering to contract with us. So I'll start with the mayor to give a brief overview of ninety five and then uh Dave or Aaron, one, two, uh, you know, Mr. Johnson or Mr. West would jump in from pop of words. Uh, they can hop in. So thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. I'm actually going to let Isaac Gaylord uh a- a- address the resolutions because uh he has been the one negotiating with the solicitors for the for the boroughs.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Isaac.
Yep. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Evening, everyone. Sorry. Uh, so Resolution ninety five is an intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorizing resolution for our proposed agreement with the Borough of Penbrook. The resolution should look pretty familiar to you in form uh as it is very similar to the ordinance you passed to authorize the agreement with the Borough of Steelton last year. The reason this is a resolution and not an ordinance uh like the Steelton Agreement is because the Authorizing Intergovernmental Cooperation Act was actually amended in between the end of last year and now. A brief overview of the agreement, uh, services will begin on January first. It is a three-year agreement with the option to renew uh for two additional years. Either party has the um option to terminate the agreement uh ninety days before the end of any uh budget year for both entities. It's the end of the calendar year as well. Um, there are some termination provisions if either municipality does decide to terminate the agreement early during any of the first three years. Uh, if the city terminates, we are committing to establish a restricted fund with fifty thousand dollars in the restricted fund. Um, and that money would have to be available to the borough should we default on the agreement uh to pay for emergency procurement of uh waste services for their residents. If they borrow uh defaults on the agreement or terminates it early, uh they would be liable to the city for uh the value of the waste containers that we are purchasing for the residents on a depreciation schedule twenty percent uh per year for the five years of the contract, as that's the main fixed capital cost that the city has going into the agreement. There are a few different services that are being, well, really only one major different service that's being provided under this agreement from Steelton, which is that uh the city's authorized to uh rent roll-off dumpsters to the borough. Uh, it's a service we provide within the city and the borough had requested that that be included within the agreement. In all other respects, this is uh functionally the equivalent of the agreement with Steelton that was authorized last year.
Thank you. And uh, again, just taking a another quick read through it. So um as I think the mayor had mentioned previously, this one uh for Penbrook, uh they've paid the fee themselves and then they go and build the residence uh accordingly. And then it looks like there are a few um and I don't know if Aaron or Dave can speed to this. Uh, there are a few, uh, I guess receptacles that will be provided to their municipal facilities uh throughout throughout the Penbrook. Uh, and uh, in terms of level of comfort uh for our guys, I guess, air, uh, Mr. Johnson and Mr. West, uh, you guys have, you know, ran the routes and comfortable that all of our vehicles are going to be able to uh make it through uh the uh the streets and alleys of Penbrook.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, uh, Mr. West.
Uh, yes, we are are running a route now to design the route for the entire area and taking all different types of routes. So we won't have to uh design the route in one way. But we we we're out there every week. We'll be actually be out there tomorrow because their trash get picked up on Wednesday. So we are, I'm gonna follow in the truck and just redesign it the way that we see fit to help us.
Okay. All right. Um, good. And then in terms of uh, I guess, if there's any service calls, they're calling uh Penbrook and then they contact us or are they going to be contacting the city directly if there's any issues with uh residents in um picking up trash?
Uh, the agreement leaves either open. I think that's sort of going to be an operational uh evolution as this goes forward.
Okay. All right. Um, and I I will turn over to start with questions uh from members of council. I will start with uh uh Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions on uh this agreement?
Um, no, I think a lot of the questions have been answered.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Allen, any questions on uh the Penbrook uh agreement?
No, I don't um have specific questions. And and maybe this is more so for um whether it be Neil or the mayor, is the mayor salon?
Yes, he is.
There. Um, so some of the things I've been thinking about, and again, this is kind of setting up, I think, for some of the discussion next week in terms of the budget. So it's more existential in 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 a certain respect. I really do appreciate the idea of some of the regional focus that we can vibe, particularly when it comes to the trash services. What I'm kind of curious about is, is there a long-term strategy um, you know, for this? And and when everything is said and done, what is the ultimate benefit back to the city uh by engaging in these services uh with some of the neighboring municipalities? And and I guess I'm looking kind of benefit both from a financial but also just from um an ability that us doing this serves our residents how? Um, and again, I I it's not from not seeing a personal benefit to it, but I I just keep thinking about as we embark on this process, as we're, you know, uh spending some time approving these agreements and and expanding these these types of services. Um, how do we answer the question that doing so is beneficial to our residents um by? So I don't know if that's something that you you, the mayor, want to answer.
I I can talk to that a little bit, uh, because I really believe in this regional approach to the delivery of services. Uh, I think it's particularly well-suited for Pennsylvania, where we have so many different municipalities in close proximity. Uh, we don't all need to be duplicating services. Um, it it wasn't uh long ago that uh Harrisburg faced its own uh pressures to privatize its trash services. And uh had we, had we gone that route, we certainly wouldn't be able to uh to do what we're doing now. I strategically, it's uh, it's about establishing a relationship with these other governing bodies that um that can benefit both uh both tax bases. We were able to offer um Penbrook residents uh a much better deal. They're going to end up paying less than they would to a private company. In turn, we're going to receive a guaranteed revenue source. Uh, you've mentioned that uh the the borough pays us, not individual uh customers. So we 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 have a guaranteed revenue stream, which is based on the number of households. And that money is allowing us to hire um additional sanitation workers, which while they will be working in Penbrook one day a week, they'll be uh able to work in Harrisburg the other uh, you know, four days uh uh of of the work week. And uh, so we're able to build capacity and give better service to our residents um while at the same time giving benefits to the surrounding taxpayer bases. And I'm particularly excited because it should open the door for other types of cooperation. Uh, Chief Interline is uh is on now and and uh one of the things that he has been looking at exploring potentially with other uh other surrounding bureaus and municipalities is uh a sort of shared services type agreement with regard to um with regard to fire and professionalizing and helping build capacity for uh some of the volunteer fire departments that are in these other uh boroughs. You've got to start somewhere. And the and the and the way to start is by building relationships between the governing bodies and um uh, and so we're pleased that sanitation is sort of opening the door, so to speak, um, for for us to hopefully develop uh long-term relationships which will benefit uh benefit everyone.
Thank you. That's um helpful to kind of get that perspective. And I think that um, again, I think all these decision things that we're doing, for me, I want to always tie it back to uh the benefit for um the residents that we serve every day. Um, so that's all I have right now. Wes, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice President Allen. Uh, President Williams, any questions regarding the Penbrook Agreement?
Yes, just a couple. Uh, will we be hiring another enforcement officer to um notify the residents of any violations that may occur?
They have their own enforcement team.
Oh, they do? Wonderful, wonderful. Okay. Um, also, is
the same, if I may, ma'am, the same as Steelton. Steelton has their own enforcement team. So we won't have to enforce the rules. They have, they will enforce the rules.
Oh, fine. Wonderful. Oh, I see that you're getting a complaint and service call system set up. Uh, the city is doing that to to resolve bureau complaints. Have we uh provided that, sorry, have we set up that service yet? Or are we going to do that? And that's to the mayor. That's the question for the mayor.
Yeah. Well, as of right now, I think uh the the two boroughs in question may may wish to handle this uh a little differently. And we're going to be working with the borough managers in each, as Isaac alluded to, to to deal with the issues of service calls. Uh, what we've done is we we set up an online portal and a direct access phone number right now for the residents of Penbrook because we engaged in a container selection process. We sent them a letter. We let them, based on our experience in Harrisburg and Steelton, we knew that people would want a choice. So um they've been able to call in or go online, select a container, and we're getting ready for a distribution of those here at the end of the month. So um we can, we can have a similar uh call line established or we can work with the borough managers to have them uh sort of funnel the information to us in one fell swoop. So that's something to to be determined.
Okay. And just, this is just to uh Mr. West and the mayor as well, uh and Mr. Johnson. I received several uh calls from residents up in the Penbrook area, and they're really excited about uh receiving the services from the city of Harrisburg. So great job.
We're excited also.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Majors.
Thank you, President Williams. Uh, Councilman Mattson, any questions?
Uh, no questions for me. I actually had an opportunity to discuss the contracts with the uh mayor and the controller's office, and that was a good discussion. Um, yeah, no, it's it seems like a great agreement. And I totally agree with the vision of shared services within municipalities as a benefit to the entire region. So I hope to find more ways we can work with one another uh across municipalities. So nothing else for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Green, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on this. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Bowers, any questions on the Penbrook Agreement?
No, thank you. I don't have any questions, Mr. Johnson. I'm happy that you're feeling better. And uh, thank you and Mr. West for your leadership with this effort.
Thank you. Okay, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you now, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, all right. Uh, first of all, I want to thank all of y'all for, you know, prayers uh for me and my wife. Uh, as you know, this uh pandemic, it it is no joke. It made me out of a believer. Um, and uh, you know, going through some things with my family, you know, sister in the hospital, thank God. Now my aunt's in there fighting, you know, ICU. It's 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 just crazy. Also, my Carter, it's just, it's just twenty twenty, real, real crazy. And I just want to say thank you for the for the prayers. And uh, as far as this uh us taking over Penbrook and Paxton, let me just say this, this uh it's a wonderful opportunity. Penbrook approached us, uh Paxton, uh the mayor pretty much uh took care of that in and to uh all our employees with us dealing with this pandemic, you know, if we got some challenges. But uh, again, I just want to say that when they was trying to outsource, it's that have been the biggest mistake that the city could have ever made because, you know, passionate I am about the sanitation department and Public Works in general. But uh, you know, them guys and them ladies are exceptional. Very, very hard. It just reminds me of me being in my military, military days. And we know, we like, we like grunts, like we infantry people, you know, we uh do a lot of hard, hard work. And uh, you know, this relationship that we building with Penbrook and Paxton like we did with Steelton, you know, it's just a wonderful thing. We make, we next-door neighbors and uh you know, I'm excited about it. And uh, again, with all these challenges that we face and we meet the challenge like we always do. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Thank all of y'all for actually believing in us because, again, uh, none of this would be possible because it's a lot of people didn't believe in us. But this administration believes in us. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And and again, I think uh, as Councilwoman Bowers mentioned, you know, your family and everyone that is dealing uh with difficult times through this pandemic are definitely in all of our prayers. And we're glad you're uh feeling uh feeling better. with difficult times through this pandemic are definitely in all of our prayers, and we're glad you're feeling feeling better. So with that, if there are any other questions on the Penbrook Resolution, I'd ask that Resolution 95 be placed on the art, the agenda for our next legislative session. Next, we'll move to Resolution 96 of 2020, and I'll read that briefly here. A resolution, Resolution 96 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Borough of Paxton for the purpose of authorizing the city to provide municipal solid waste and recycling collection and disposal services within the borough. And I guess I'll go back to Isaac. And if there are any significant differences between this contract and the contract that we're signing with Penbrook, I know maybe the how their, the payments are being done may be different. But if you could just highlight any of the the differences between the contracts.
Yeah, the the contracts are very similar. I would say the the first major difference you'll see looking at it is that services in Paxton don't start till February 1st, so it's a month after Penbrook. They are also not requesting the roll-off dumpster services we'll be providing in Penbrook. So that's a little simpler. The the payments are the same, so they will be paying us directly for their the number of households that we service within the borough, which I think as of last estimate is around 717 for the Borough of Paxton. Other than that, the contracts and resolutions are as close to identical as I could make them, given the slight differences between the two boroughs and their needs.
Thank you. So I guess, are we, are the fees, in terms of the fee structure, the fee structure is the same in both contracts?
Yeah, so the fees are different between the two boroughs. The the annual fee is slightly higher in Penbrook than it is in Paxton. That was due to a different services that they've requested. One example of this is the the residents of Penbrook will be receiving a separate container to put out lawn waste in that the residents of Paxton won't be receiving. And that's sort of how the different pricing developed.
Okay.
But it's it's the same structure as far as us receiving the money, just the amount that's getting paid per household is a little bit different.
Okay, all right. Okay, and as a result of this contract, I know we're looking to the budget here shortly. But are are we looking to hire additional people to do both? Or are, you know, because we're taking on Paxton, we need it for people because we need, we're taking on Penbrook, we made the additional amount? Or we're just looking at the complement all as one whole complement?
I can answer that one. So they are currently on different days. So that's another difference. So Penbrook is on Wednesday, Paxton is on Thursday. We are looking to hire six new sanitation workers total to service both of the contracts combined, plus give us a little bit more capacity in in sanitation, which will benefit Harrisburg and Steelton as well.
Okay, all right. And so then, so for each of those separate agreements, we have different pickup days. So Tuesday, Wednesday, I think it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for each of those municipalities. Okay, no additional questions for me at this time, but I'll start the opposite way now. And I'll start with, I guess I ended with Councilwoman Bowers. So I'll start with Councilwoman Bowers. You have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Gaylord, for providing the differences between the two agreements.
Thanks.
All right. Councilwoman Green, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Mattson, any questions on Resolution 96?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you for the overview.
Okay, President Williams, any questions on Resolution 96?
No, I don't. Thank you very much.
Vice President Allen, any questions on Resolution 96?
None right now. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions on Resolution 96?
Already answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And as I noted, everything in that contract is the same. So it's the same. It's the three-year contract through 2023 with the all the extension for two additional years. And as as the mayor mentioned, I think that these are great starting points to have some of those larger conversations. If the shared services agreements and intergovernmental agreements, you know, work well, our region benefits when we all work together. And I know just with everything that's going to be facing our region, you know, and if we can even get, as the mayor mentioned, if we can work with some of these surrounding fire companies and look at maybe combination agreements or some other agreements, this is a good first step to to show that, you know, the benefit that, you know, adjacent municipalities working together can have for our region. So with that, if there aren't any additional questions, I'd ask that Resolution 96 be placed on the legislative agenda for our next legislative session. And with that, I will turn it back over to President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Now move on to public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have any public comment?
Yes, yes, we do. We have two comments tonight. The first one is from Teresa Mack. She did not put her location. She just said, how does this resolution, Resolution 93 she's referencing, how does this resolution help homeowners who live next to abandoned properties? Thanks, Teresa Mack. And then the second comment is, let's see here. Elected members of city council are right recognizing that tonight's virtual work session agenda does not include the Harrisburg Comprehensive Plan, but as a resident, I am gravely concerned about the impending deadline for public comment on the plan, which will affect everything about life in Harrisburg for years to come. I need to challenge why the process has been allowed to roll along during a pandemic that has citizens in crisis crises. In deep struggle to survive, unable to stop and absorb the scope and complexity of the plan to understand how it will affect them and to think through what their feedback might be. I need to challenge why the public comment period has taken place during a grueling election season with so many other issues dominating the news and conversations. I need to challenge how a couple of virtual Zoom sessions covering this massive plan earlier this year qualifies as sufficient public engagement. I'm fairly well informed and did not even know about these sessions. One would think that that an insert could have gone out with trash bills that are mailed anyhow to each property owner. One would think that in response to the pandemic, the whole process of finalizing the plan would be deferred until at least mid 2021. So that, for example, you could hold neighborhood-specific in-person community meetings in each of the areas listed under neighborhood slash local plans. I think this whole process is being rushed through during the worst of times. And I think that that publicity and engagement around the plan has been abysmal. Right up to the present moment, with the public comment period closing this week, and one would think there would be huge banners on the city's website and Facebook page alerting people to the impending deadline. But no, the process is being allowed to just roll along silently. It seems like the council is thinking the less public engagement and comment, the better. I must have attended or watched the recording of each of the incredibly informative weekly lunch and learn sessions prepared and hosted by young professionals of colors, Harrisburg Comprehensive Plan Community Working Group. See, and then they listed a Facebook page. Over a series of recent Sundays, these were Facebook Live events joined by various panelists who covered a chapter of the plan a week in depth. It was these fellow citizens who have put in their expertise and time to help me get familiar with what the plan covers and to think about whatever public comments I wish to submit. If I even have the time to write them up by Friday, which is not likely. I am curious, what has the council been working on during this 45-day public comment period? What have you done to engage citizens, encourage our informed feedback? Is the decision to let the original schedule stand during this pandemic in the best interest of the residents who will be affected by the plan for years to come? What is your rush to close this process now? I ask that this public comment period that is about to close becomes one in a round of several public comment periods over a period of months. I ask that the finalization of this plan be deferred until such time as you can truly engage with it with and better inform your public. Sincerely, I want to say Elise Kazar in the 1700 block of North Third Street. And that is in public comment for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Houston. I asked for a motion to adjourn, please.
President Williams, just a few things. I know typically we don't respond to public comment, but I just wanted, just for the benefit of the public, since the the comprehensive plan is in my committee, the plan is in coordination with the administration. You have public hearings where council will review chapters of the comprehensive plan. We're currently working out what that schedule will look like. But then when we are looking through it, council will have the ability to suggest amendments to the plan. And then we do look to solicit a public comment during that process. So there will be a process. The 45-day period, as I understood it, was just simply to allow intergovernmental agencies to review and make amendments or changes or make any questions they may have had. So that's, just wanted to respond to that. And just the other, another piece is Penn State reached out to ask council for topics they may be interested in and researching for us. You know, they just came before us a few weeks ago and had asked if we were, there was any topics we were interested in researching or looking into with them. So I'm just asking everybody to just think of some topics you'd be interested in. If you could let me know by Friday, what you would be interested in, the students researching, that'd be helpful. And I'll be reaching out to you individually just to see what your input is. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Anyone else?
Yep, just real quick, if I may, just a reminder, council members, we have a busy week next week in terms of budget hearings. So if you haven't done so already, please submit your questions over to Chardin. You can CC myself so we can get them over to the administration. And I will be updating that once I see the questions to set a schedule for next week's sessions to be able to get the departments in front of us. So stay tuned. I know you're all looking forward to a busy week of budget hearings. It's my favorite time of year. And I just make sure you get your questions in. That's the only thing for tonight that you have to know.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, please. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.